Six o'clock, call the meeting to order, has clerk take roll.
DeBorak?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Walters?
Here. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, no additions or corrections to the agenda in front view tonight. Take a motion, please. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Vogel? Yeah.
Motion carries, next item is public comments, this is the time and place for any items other than those on a public hearing. Wish to speak, please come to podium, state your name and address for the record. Request to keep your comments to five minutes, we do have one person who put in a speaker registration card tonight, Mr. Rob Passwell. With the American Legion post, Rob.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I'm here tonight to just say that we would like to tomorrow, Memorial Day ceremony again. This year, the same way that we did it last year. Tracy's here, where she got the paperwork, we'll get it in front of the Parks and Rec Board and stuff. But I do see some new faces, American Legion, stop in if you haven't been down there, we're Veterans Support Organization. Out of bar, even though there's a bar in there, but some of the things we've done in the past year is we raised eighty-five hundred dollars for the Holden Cancer Center in Iowa City, we helped a private woman lost her two-year-old son to incurable cancer with sixty-three hundred dollars. I have a coworker right now that his four-year-old daughter is just diagnosed with a rare form of brain tumor, stage four. And we have since given him fifteen hundred dollars. We're standing ready to give out a thousand dollars in scholarships to North Polk seniors, we just need the seniors to get to the guidance counselor's office and fill out the applications, and then we'd be happy to give out the money to them. So, just a little bit of what we do, but getting back to the Memorial Day ceremony, so last year we did, Mayor Morse was kind enough to come down and be part of the ceremony. We do a flag folding, a full twenty-one gun salute, and we do the bugle taps, we kind of recreate the ceremony that a service member would give should they fall off the line of duty. And there's a small script, there's an invocation, a benediction, and then the flags that Tracy Lund is so kind enough to provide that line square around Memorial Day every year and stuff, we go, we sell something, so. That's in a nutshell, kind of what we're looking to do, and I just wanted to come before the council and inform you that I'm no longer the commander, I had to step down from eating officer duties due to enhanced readiness requirements for my job as National Guard. But I'm still chairing the Memorial Day ceremony, so if anybody has any questions, please feel free to contact me. My phone number is five one five three two six two zero E two, that's my cell, send me a text or leave me a voicemail, I don't have to pick up. The one thing we could have used more of last year was community involvement, and we're gonna work hard this year at advertising. We've got North Polk Living on board and a couple other social media pages, but you can spread the word, we'd like to see you down there. One minor change, we're gonna look at doing it at ten o'clock rather than four o'clock afternoon, and I think that would work out much better. Because I believe there's also supposed to be a walk down to the center or something, so.
I'll thank you for coming tonight, and Tracy, I know you called me last week and asked me about this, and Rob, you called Saturday and asked me about this. Again, and I hope that this can come down, on a personal note, I'm glad that the ten o'clock change, because I know that was kind of a late afternoon thing the last time, and I think that ten o'clock this morning would be a little easier for some attendance. So again, I think like I said to both you guys, get your presentation to the Parks Board, they'll make the formal approval, send it to us, and we're good to go. Looking forward to it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I want to thank you guys as well, very much, and also I assume that we'll put it on our page and advertise it on the city page as well.
It was a neat deal, if you get a chance to come down, short celebration, but it was a neat deal.
Flags alone are worth it, right?
That's cool.
Good job.
I'd just like to say that I don't think a lot of people know about those scholarships, I was fortunate that both of my daughters received one quite a while ago, but it's very worthwhile, and I'm surprised that they don't know about it, come out, it was a nice scholarship.
Retired Sergeant Major Ed Gabbard is the one who is actually the chairman of the scholarship, and I'm on it too. As of two weeks ago, the last time I talked to him, because I've been gone, I've been doing some military training, as of two weeks ago, they hadn't had and we want to give away, we want to give away at least a thousand dollars, they, they're a five hundred dollar scholarship. We'd love to get away two of them, but the kids gotta get them and they gotta fill them up. So if you know anybody that has seniors at North Polk, we'd really like to give them some money.
I'm sitting here trying to remember who's seniors this year.
Not senior coffee, not senior coffee.
No.
But I can vouch for the fish fry and the bingo nights, that, my daughters love that. So keep up the good work. I know you do it, but continue to keep us informed, because I'd like to be able to say that the city is supporting Legion like we have ongoing. So I think that's a great relationship, and you guys do great work, and want to continue to support you guys.
We definitely appreciate that, sir.
And I would thank you again for your call on Saturday, and taking the time to talk with me.
I appreciate it, hold on, Jason.
Tracy, anything to add?
Yeah.
Because I know you're here for that, the same reason.
For anybody that's new regarding, I just, I have printed out some pictures, if you want to pass these around, for anybody that's new to Polk City. Just really quickly, again, the history on Gary Met Me, instead of asking for permission, I found myself asking for forgiveness because I didn't know the protocol and how that all was supposed to take place, so I do have our paperwork and written information. And what happened with me, I guess personally, is I was, had the opportunity to go to Arlington National Cemetery. I was in Washington DC for almost a week touring, and my nephew was to get married. And while I was at the cemetery, I'll be honest, I didn't see tombstones, I saw faces. And it was a very humbling experience, and God bless you, when I came back to Polk City and the following, I think it was, I don't know, mid-April maybe, I ended up calling Jason, and he put me on the phone with Grady Franzin, and it all escalated so quickly because I was completely being led by my heart rather than the know-how of exactly what to do. So again, Gary, I appreciate you working with me and the gals at the city, I understand more the protocol and what goes into all that. I think it's a beautiful reminder of what our four-day holiday is about, especially living in a lake community like we have. I know one of the discussions I had with Gary was, I grew up on Lake Minnesota, and then when I lived in Arizona, we were at Lake Havasu, and every year there was a death on the lake because of this four-day weekend, and I think if we, the presence of those flags, I know not only does it embrace what we're doing commemorating our veterans, it slows people down a little bit, it makes them stop and think about what that four-day weekend is all about, and I think as a community, this is an amazing opportunity for us to, A, honor our veterans. These flags have come to represent individuals because they've been sponsored by people in the community, they've been sponsored by people in Chicago, a guy in Connecticut, I mean, I've got names and addresses of these people, and with the help of the Legion Auxiliary this year, we will be sending postcards to these people with a picture of their flag, which is something, it's a lot of work, but now with the auxiliary onboard, it is gonna be something, and they're gonna remember Polk City, Iowa, and they're gonna remember how Polk City, Iowa, and our square honored their loved ones. And I think that's a sight to behold in and of itself, and again, this is gonna be our third year, and I hope this is something that continues on and on long after, long after my term is over, so to speak, so, alright, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
In here, I don't know who I.
Keep it working.
Yeah, alright, thanks so much.
Thanks. Nice, guys, appreciate you guys, all you're doing, and look forward to working with you guys. Moving on, action item five, consent agenda, I have no additions or corrections, but take motion.
If I could, I'd like a short explanation about number ten.
Oh, sure. You want us to pull it, or?
We don't have to, I just like to.
I'm gonna throw the floor to Lindsay, because I know this has been hers.
Okay, so this is a service that Wayne Family and Resources of Iowa offers to businesses, cities, schools, any type of business for that matter, and what it is, is it's offering assistance to employees and their families, spouses, children, who need any type of assistance in their life. It could be financial assistance, legal assistance, mental health assistance, there's just a long list of assistances that's being offered. Also, it offers crisis response, so for us, it's beneficial to us because if there's something going on in the fire department or the police department, say a death, they will come on-site and do on-site counseling for all of our employees. Situations where people are in shock, they don't understand what's going on, this crisis response team comes and helps us. And so without the city doing this annual contract with them, we'd be paying them to come out on a one-time basis more than what it does cost annually.
So, once we get this in place, if they come out for an employee, then there's no other charges, or?
That's just for an emergency response, but if an employee calls, they offer a hotline for an employee, and the services for such as counseling or therapy, there, we would be getting six sessions for our employees or their family first. So it's actually a wide range of services that they offer, the emergency response is just one type of service. But let's just say if you needed elder care counseling, the city is providing the service for you to be able to call and get that assistance that you need for that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we have something very similar to this at the school.
Yes.
That was ran through Heartland, but it found out if the initial session was, they'd come out and talk to you, if you needed more or wanted more, there was a pretty substantial charge.
And that all depends on the employer and what plan they purchase, but the city here is gonna be purchasing a plan of six. So that will be offered to any circumstance that you call about within a year, you can call and get six sessions for free per circumstance.
So, is this something, we've got a lot of employees right here, is this something you guys are excited about, you see a need for this?
What I feel like is amazing about this is, it's not only for our employees, but it's for our employees' spouses, our employees' children, the council members, you guys can all call, and these services are available to you guys. So for the amount of money, I think it's.
So let me piggyback on this real quick, so when we lost Roy Bingham over the fire department, and we were going through this, I had had the Ankeny Fire Department at the time, and I was chief at the time, had reached out to me and had asked if we had any AP. And at the time, we didn't, we've got a different program that we had one person take advantage of, that just quite honestly didn't work. And I think had we had this at the time, it would have been a tremendous, tremendous benefit, and I, based on what you've said so far, I can already see, well, I know of one particular instance so far in the last twelve months that this would have come in.
Just one event in the place of fire department, pay, this will pay for itself, just one event.
In regards to the emergency response, yes.
And probably have better, because I know at least, I don't know how they're doing it now, but I mean, at one point in time, it was all done through volunteer services, and, you know, volunteer, no offense, but it's paid for. Any other questions?
No, no, thank you for the explanation. Also, I had it circled here, I forgot, I'd like to talk about number eight too, but we can pull that.
You want to pull eight? Okay, so let's pull eight, I'll take a motion on consent, less eight.
Someone.
Second.
Take a pick, roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak? Vogel? Yeah, Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries, alright, we'll go to eight, under consent, which was considered motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-one, setting a public hearing for petition request, rezoning a portion of Outlet Y to twelve oh plaque two from R one, R one A.
And reading that, reading the information that's in here was, they're gaining a lot, correct? From eight to nine lots, yeah, they're gaining a lot.
And all eight is doing is just setting the public hearing.
Okay.
Take a motion on eight.
Someone.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries, next item on the agenda, if I can find all my paperwork. I gotta get some paperwork. Where'd my public hearing stuff go? Killing me, here it is, sorry, alright, my bad, too many piles going tonight, sorry. Item one, two thousand eighteen park improvement project, it's time and place to close regular meeting, no public hearing on two thousand eighteen park improvement project. The clerk when the notice is published.
April sixth.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
I'd ask staff to make a report, Tim West is not here tonight, so Kathleen.
Sure, yeah, the bid proposals received on April seventeenth for the Parks project and two bids received. The low bidder is Concrete Connection out of Johnston, and their bid price was two hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Howaring Construction was the other bidder, they were higher. We have worked with them before, they've actually did some work in Leonard Park and over by the square, probably recommending them as the contractor project. The insurance certificate, I believe, was submitted to the city today, and they're expecting contracts and bonds to be delivered first thing tomorrow morning. They're anticipating a notice receipt on Wednesday.
Anything else?
No, that bid was real close, I'm on the marital estimate, it was, right?
Is it, yeah, two hundred fifty, it's four thousand dollars over, very, very.
Is there anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the project? Representative from Parks Commission here tonight, because I'm happy that was the one. I guess I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to receive and file bids. Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Next item, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-two, making a word of construction contract.
So, I've got the same concerns that I, I should leave that way, I am excited about ninety-five percent of what we're doing here. I still question, need, value for spending what we are, which isn't even in the information we got here, and I'm sure that, who's gonna be here from?
Tim.
Tim has that, but, so what portion of the information and what work is being done in Simmer Park, do you have that, Kathleen?
I did.
They're kind of lumped together, I can't, I apologize for the information I have, I don't have that answer.
I have that conversation with Tim West on this, knowing that question was going to be asked tonight, and it will make a difference of twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, and again, I'm certainly burying the lead by bringing up five percent of bid here when we're making substantial progress, and I want to do that, but I have to think that even spending twelve thousand dollars in that park for those things, if we were to line item out, things that we wanted to do, and to me that would be reflective of benefiting most people with the highest use, would be a long ways before we'd get to this, based again, we heard from the folks that came to the Parks meeting, January, whenever that was. So, and I like the idea of investing in a older part of town, and if we could take, my proposal would be to take that money and use it for something, maybe even in Simmer Park, I don't know that is the case, but in an older part of town, or in a under-used park area of town, or green space that we have yet to be developed. I just think that when we heard very clear, I heard, should say, very clearly from the folks over there that they were pretty satisfied, not completely satisfied, pretty satisfied with what Simmer Park was as a functioning neighborhood park. And I don't think that's true, quite honestly, for a number of parks, so I would rather reallocate that money, not spend any less on parks, but reallocate that money to some other person, and I don't know if that's going back to the Parks or using my expertise and his team or what, but reallocate that money to something that is more needed than I personally feel. How a couple park, or is it even, maybe, is it park benches, or is it just a concrete?
It was the concrete, it was the park benches, and I believe bathroom facility, clothe, and clothe, yeah.
So, if that's just me, then I'm just.
So all, so since you echoed your comment from the last time, I'll echo my comment from the last time as well, which is, I had talked to Jack Timmy, and then he was one of the ones who spearheaded the group of people that come down here, and I do think that a little bit of work up there for them would go a long ways, probably tie Simmer Park up and basically complete that project. And I think that the small amount of money that we're talking, as a whole, I just think that it's worth just getting it done and getting it out of the way. I think that you throw a little, you know, throw them a little bone up there to get that done, lack of a better term, but I think that picnic table, grill, or whatever was all, and then I think that it would maybe entice them to spend a little of their own money that was discussed at one point about doing some volunteer time, and maybe some volunteer money up there, you know, could potentially happen, but that's again, that's my conversation with him, sidebar, you know, from away from the council, so. Ron?
Well, I, very small percentage of what we're spending, and maybe you don't agree with me, but I think the original part of town, as I call it, deserves some recognition, deserves some things once in a while. You know, if you take into perspective what we're spending in the newer parts of town, it's pretty small, and I think, I agree with everything that's said, it's gonna, I think that little bit is gonna suffice the people, I don't think they want playground equipment up there, that's not to say they won't in the future, but there aren't, there aren't that many kids up there, there are some, but not that many young kids up there, but I just think they deserve it.
Yeah, and again, I'm not saying that, to be clear, it's more about the use at that park, when again, we heard that it was pretty well-built up, if there's, thank you for the correction, a different use in the original part of town. I'm all for that, I'm not saying transfer this anywhere else, even to a different area, but again, I don't know that, again, if you were to make an exhaustive list of all the line items that broke down very minutely on where we spent money, I don't know that park benches in Simmer Park or bathrooms in Simmer Park would make the top hundred or so.
If we're gonna get bathrooms and all that for twelve thousand dollars, I think we better hop on it, we're not getting all that.
Getting closure, that's the kind of.
Closure, sorry. Right.
Closure.
Yeah. A place to put a word in.
Anybody else have any other comments?
I know exactly where Rob's coming from, but I do share sentiments, just like the last meeting that, when Jack and the whole crew was there in January, January, that they're, you know, that's kind of what we laid out that we were gonna do moving forward, and having the slab, you know, having the concrete slabs there and just kind of finishing it off, I guess, I do know what you're saying, because specifically, I really do, but I think that's the little piece that we can do to really kind of tie that up for the time being, and not have to come back to the quest later, that would probably not quite go as over smoothly as it would just to bundle this all together and do it at the same time, that's, that I respect and appreciate.
Yeah, well, I live by Lost Lake Park, I'm not in any way saying that it should be spent over there or anywhere else in the newer development. You know, I'll be super clear with that.
I think if I had to do over again, do it over again, I don't think we'd have accepted that ground up there.
This has been going on for a long time, deep there.
But I also am saying, saying that.
We didn't, we bought the, we didn't.
Yeah, I never said that, I never said anything different than that, I know we bought it. But the one thing it did accomplish is got rid of all that brush up there where I thought the coyotes were.
Well, and, you know, Public Works has done a great job, just in side time cleaning it up, you guys have.
And had we not gotten the ground, that probably wouldn't have happened.
Very true. You want to make a motion, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I thought we had the motion.
No, we didn't, we just had a discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Session, roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Vogel? Sarchet?
Nope.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we're pulling D, correct, because it's optional, and we don't have the contract and bond, right?
You don't have them in our hands.
Yeah, they're to be delivered tomorrow, and there was notice to proceed on Wednesday, so we could issue it, maybe, they get subject to receipt of those. Received and approval by engineer and council, feel better.
Whoever, yeah, make the motion based on any of your recommendation.
Engineer and council being you.
Engineer.
Counsel, correct. Curious how you spell council.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-three, contingent upon approval from engineering at hand.
Attorney.
Attorney.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
DeBorak? Vogel? Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, item two, amending zoning ordinance regarding regulations associated with fireworks sales. Time and place to close regular meeting and open the public hearing on amending the zoning ordinance regarding regulations associated with fireworks sales. Park when the notice is published.
April thirteenth.
Any written for, or any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Like staff to make a report, and I don't know if you want to do it, if I want to do it, or if we want to start with our council.
Well, I would just say we find ourselves in a very strange place.
Yes, we do.
State law stated one thing, court stated another, and because it's within the court system and everything apart because, family takes lead on this.
I think one thing that's important before we go there is the history here, is that we had two moratoriums in place, and we've, we're kind of at the point where we've talked several times over the last several months of when we needed to bring this forward, and it did go to planning and zoning last Monday, which they did present, approve, and push on to us for the unanimous decision.
Yeah, it was about a year ago when the, like just like your pastor and the governor approved the legislation that allowed cities to control and prohibit use of fireworks within the city, but specifically provided that cities have to allow sale of fireworks within the city, but did allow cities to control where those sales take place through zone. The amendment that is before you is to specify where within the city of city you will allow fireworks sales. We had, because of the timing last year, the governor signed the legislation shortly before the first sale period, we placed in a moratorium in place to give us time and figure out what was going on with the legislation. We extended that, given the fact that there weren't going to be a lot of sales taking place between then and now. But we're to the point where we need to address where we want those, the sale of fireworks to take place. So the ordinance before you is the recommendation that has come out of P and Z as to where the, where we would allow fireworks sales. You will, you've probably heard that there are other cities that tried to place other regulations or ordinances in place to go along with the zoning regulations that currently is being litigated, you know, can you put other restrictions over and above where? And.
They made them take down every night.
Additional insurance, you know, parking requirements, various things that were tried. And the direction that we've gotten so far from the federal district board is you can control where, but nothing else. So that's all that this ordinance does right now, is. So that's all that this ordinance does right now is set, says where those sales take place. But we are hesitant to, without further direction from the court, to say you should or could have the ability to place other restrictions. So this is the first step. It lets, if someone comes in and wants to sell fireworks, it allows city staff to say, you can, within this zoning district, if you get approval from the landlord or whomever is owns that property. So that was where we are right now.
And you said earlier that the federal district court issue may not be settled until this fall.
Oh, yeah, it definitely won't be settled before this upcoming, um, sales season, which begins, I believe, July, or June eighth and goes through July fourth or something like that, or maybe July eighth. We just wanted to get something in place before that season came up.
Anybody present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed amendment? The motion, close the public hearing, reopen the reading maybe. Roll call.
Vogel? Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen five hundred fireworks zoning ordinance.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet? Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Same.
Oh, yeah.
Motion carries, item three, Davis Street Reconstruction Project. Item A, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-five, permitting change order number one in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars for a hundred and sixty linear feet extension of a new eight inch PVC water main to replace an outdated four inch problematic water main, bringing the total contract value to eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred eleven dollars and eighty cents. Gary Kathleen?
Oh, Mike came up with the idea.
Yeah.
Probably, is that an official term?
Yeah.
Trying to get it all in there.
When they were working on a, uh, water bank break, I believe the only one that we had this winter, that, um, you know, if we just had a newer eight inch water line, I passed this, uh, and put it in with the Davis Street project, it would, um, serve us well. Remember that, um, depending on the difficulty, you have any place between four thousand and five thousand for every water main break as an average. So it's not gonna take long and this is my bad self bad, as we've had two main breaks in two years in nearly the same location. So now would be the time to do that. So this would be, uh, you would be approving a change order that would add thirteen thousand nine thirty-six to your contract, which is a hundred and sixty linear feet of eight inch PVC. And item B is engineering that goes with, um, and change in engineering that goes with, um, this additional work on the street project.
Anything else to add, Mike, to that?
We put it out there pretty well.
Okay, since it was your idea.
Team up.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen forty-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore? Vogel?
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to approve, uh, approve supplement number two, the engineering services agreement for Snyder and Associates, amount of three thousand three hundred six hundred dollars. Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Same.
DeVore?
Motion carries, item C, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-six, permitting water main easement. Gary.
Need an easement on the corner of Davis and South Third Street. Um, this easement, uh, was worked on by Mike and Snyder Associates. Um, it's going to be signed tomorrow as there's going to be a change in ownership. And that is why you don't have it tonight. Um, but the, uh, the easement has been prepared as all of our easements are, it reflects the same virtue.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore?
Motion carries, item four, consider motion to approve the agreement for traffic safety improvement program funding for the RRFB crosswalk flashers at the intersections of Van Dorn and Third Street and South Side and Third Street.
How like for me?
Good.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, as council will recall, it was, um, made public sometime early, early this winter that, um, we were going to, uh, get crosswalk grant for rectangular rapid flashing beacons for, uh, Van Dorn and Third Street as well as, um, South Third Street and South Side Drive, where there is a pedestrian slash bike trail. There was some discussion at the beginning of the year that, um, due to the federal DOT removing, um, RRFBs from, uh, the uniform traffic code, uh, sign, uh, sign devices of uniform traffic, um, that we were not going to be able to move forward, that we would have to find another alternative. Problem is, it's not a good alternative. Um, case was made, um, by Justin Jackson with Snyder and myself filed with the federal DOT. Uh, they have allowed us to move forward with these signals. And DOT has, uh, placed in front of you tonight for your approval, a grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for these signals.
Questions or comments? Motion?
Second.
Roll call please.
Walters?
Yes.
DeVore? Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, item five, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand eighteen six hundred, amending chapter ninety-nine sewer service charges over the city code of ordinances of the city of Polk City, Iowa, by adding a sewer surcharge for the Rock Creek sanitary sewer connection. Gary.
As was talked about at budgeting, uh, there is a need to make up local option sales tax that will be lost in the future. Local option sales tax paid for the Rock Creek sanitary sewer debt. This will now be a monthly service charge of fifteen dollars per sewer connection or, or sewer customer on a monthly basis. And, uh, this, this is a change by ordinance, so it takes three readings.
Questions, comments?
I still, this is another, uh, details piece that's getting in the way on, I guess. I, I think a percentage of users that are out to go have a surcharge, but I understand, uh, to a certain degree, the nature of, of like this route, uh, we can adjust as we, uh.
What, what'd you have in mind as a percentage?
Well, back in the, we're using fifteen dollars, so whatever that equates to for us for, uh, you know, so an average user wouldn't see any change. And if you use more water, you would pay more, less. I, I know that's more cumbersome, but, um, we gotta do, we gotta do something. Is it too late to possibly change that or?
We can do just about anything that you want to, councilman. What's presented tonight, uh, is what I thought was, had been, um, decided to move forward with.
Yeah, and I, and I don't want, this isn't directed at you. We were talking about a lot of different things. We already, that, that, that's fine. I, I just, I don't think it's a huge difference one way or the other. I just, to me, the sentiment to, that we are charging people for the water they use, which, which I think this is doing by the, the, the joining the Rock Creek sanitary sewer rather than charging a fee or a surcharge, uh, for, you know, any number of things, I speculate. But to me, that has a certain connotation and, and that's not what we're doing here. We're charging people for, for what they're using. And as part of that, we need to gain access to the Rock Creek sanitary sewer and the decision we made to do that. And, and we're, we're benefiting from, from that having been done when we did. Uh, I just don't want people to think all of a sudden they're getting a surcharge and something happened. It was, uh, you know, something that we subsidized through, uh, sales tax previously. I think it's prudently decided not to do that anymore, given, uh, some of the things that they place.
So, so this is, if I understand it's right, citywide, everybody with a sewer hookup, business or residential is gonna pay this fifteen dollars?
Is that correct?
Well, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Councilman Sarchet, that, you know, for a homeowner who maybe somebody lives there by themselves to pay fifteen dollars and be compared to a school that's thousands of flushings a day, I would kind of think a percentage rate would be a different way to go. Does that make sense?
Availability charge though, so.
Am I making any sense? I've been known not to, so go ahead and tell me if I'm not.
You want this based on per thousand gallons of water? Yeah, so I, I can't, I'm making this more difficult, but if, whatever that fifteen dollars works out to per thousand dollars of gallons, two per thousand gallons, work that back to a percentage and then calculate it, uh, based on rate, right? Am I oversimplifying?
So we pay fifteen dollars.
If you're an average user. If, if, if you're, to, to Ron's point, uh, you know, school or, you know, a high water user, deep residential, it should, I mean, it will, doing it how I'm suggesting will result in the same dollar amount collectively coming in. It's just where it come from would be.
All right, I, and we may have agreed on this, but I actually, I absolutely agree with you. I mean, why should, why should, uh, same person pay the same as what the school would pay? Now, I don't know, remind me what we talked about before, but if that's gonna be a nightmare, we try to put a percentage in this chart together that says, uh, I don't know.
I don't know what the bill, the billing software is capable of in that regard. I mean, you're already charging your customers based on their usage on their sewer, per usage, so.
So we would just need to increase the rate on the sewer piece. That's what we would have. By what it would equate to fifteen dollars times however many.
But you would have to do it as part of the sewer. It wouldn't be a separate, like this would be a separate one.
Identify separately that this amount of money coming in is strictly Rock Creek sanitary. Whereas the fifteen, you would have been able to decipher between the two. This will all come in all as one.
Right, and so is there a way to still use those funds towards the Rock Creek sanitary sewer payments?
Yes, but you're not gonna be able to really analyze the incoming funds and to know for sure that the purpose of the incoming money was what it was for. Does that make sense?
It doesn't, because we know how much, we know what the rate is. We know how much people are being charged, therefore we know how individually that, I, I.
The usage would fluctuate though, month to month is what she's saying. So from an audit purpose, you wouldn't be able to go back and say, we received ten thousand dollars in the month of May specific to Rock Creek, because you're in, you're increased usage is gonna go up.
From May to June to December. And, and so, but if, if we calculate it annually and I know our, our usage is going up, will we need to adjust this every year? We should be able to get to the same spot. But again, um, and I get that, to me, it, it, the, the ad of being able to know definitively what month where it is less than the, what I'll say, equability of, of spreading it out differently than one account, one fifteen dollars. That's my.
I, I think what I'm gonna do is say, if I might, is since this is debt, trying to treat it differently. And we're trying to create an account specifically for this debt. And when we confuse it with a user charge, or user, use each charge, uh, we're not gonna know if that's for debt or not.
But you still can use those funds for debt.
But we can still use them. Now, we're, now we're taking a guess as to was it four hundred and ninety-two dollars? Or was it five hundred and fifty dollars that was actually paid to go to Rock Creek sanitary sewer?
And many, many other cities, when we kind of analyze this in the beginning, have connection fees separate from the usage. So you're already, yes, so you're already billing your customer based on their usage anyway. The more you use, the more you pay. This is a separate, this is for you to be able to hook up to it, essentially.
So to be fair, if we were able to use lost funds, we had to get that money somewhere else, which would have been higher. The T word taxes, right? I mean, so we probably, at some point, we all would have paid for it, probably at the same. I mean, because we would have had the money, we'd have had to raise taxes or whatever.
And, I mean, but, but I think the bigger picture is how long we've been able to go.
Correct, right.
From, from, from when it was connected to today's date, how long we've been able to go not have to go down this road. And if you go back when we first took Rock Creek sanitary, that fee would have been substantially higher than where we're at today. I remember those, I remember some of those numbers. They were gonna be crazy high.
It, it would have. And, and my primary reason again is I, I, I think a percentage of usage is. I also don't wanna get in the habit, there's a number of, of other communities that take pride in lowering their levy rate while jacking up all their other fees. Not making any comments, because it's a general statement, but we're not doing that. But I think this gets in the way of that message. But again, the, the, you know, the fairer way, I, 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 it doesn't sound like it, but I'm really not trying to create a bunch of work here. And I do appreciate the fact that, that debt funds are, are better designated through a fee.
And then, and then, and then when the, and then when the debt is paid down.
The, the rate should go back down or the fee goes away, either.
This can be visited on a periodic basis and such that, do we have enough, do we not have enough? Uh, do we need to increase it, can we decrease it, that, that, that thing, so.
How many counts do we have? How many customers?
About seventeen hundred.
What are we on, Rocky?
Five fifty-nine.
How much?
Five hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
For year?
Per year.
And our payments go through when? No, but what year does, do those schedule of payments?
Another twenty years.
Twenty, twenty-one point nine, using this fifteen dollar a month per customer, which should go up in time. And if we have the ability down the road, have an industrial user, or water, we can provide the opportunity to, uh, hire rate for it. As other cases. So if we have an industrial user with, uses a lot of water, we charge for it. So whatever we were paying per month, if we only use this, it would take twenty-two years.
Keep in mind though, that fifteen dollars was a phased approach. That fifteen dollars wasn't even enough.
Right, still subsidizing, so.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, the, the loss is used as a tax relief component. And now, because we're a better community, we have rooftops, we are bearing the burden of paying for, uh, use. We don't have a lot of options. You let her ride and keep going, or down the road, we're going to get hit with a twenty-five, thirty-five or forty-five dollar surcharge. So if we step it up now at a lower, lower rate, go to twenty dollars next year, twenty-two.
And I'm not suggesting changing that. It's, it's how we do it. Is it, is it a service fee or is it a percentage?
Well, I'm, I'm pretty certain, and I've been around a long time, once it's put in, it's not gonna go away. That will be determined twenty years from now. I probably won't be around. Somebody else will.
So obviously, this is a three-reading deal, so does anybody wanna make a motion on this to someone coming on?
I'll second.
Further discussion on it?
So this sets forth the specific nature of the first reading towards the service fee, and so if we wanted to do percentage-based, it would take another, do we have to start over?
Yes.
That would be my suggestion, given the change.
Roll call, please.
Devorek?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consider motion to accept Dan Govins' resignation as fire chief effective as such time as full-time fire chief is hired. Unfortunately, Chief Govins couldn't be here tonight, so a little background on this, obviously, I think you saw his, uh, note in the packet, um, and this is just the first step and a little handful of steps here as we move forward to, uh, going down the full chief, our full-time fire chief route, it's been discussed and identified in this year's budget, um, Dan Govins is, is, has done a great job for the department, and on a personal note, um, I thank him from the bottom of my heart for stepping up, um, when he needed to, and has done a great job carrying the torch, so, um, this was a difficult decision to get to this point, um, but all being said, this is, um, the right decision moving forward, uh, for future Polk City, and honestly, it's been identified probably even twenty-five, thirty years ago that this would eventually get here, so, anyway, unfortunately, like I say, uh, Dan couldn't be here tonight, but I do expect, um, he won't be at another meeting where he's, he's there too, he's not going away, he's sure of that. Need a motion simply until someone says... And he's not leaving the department, let's be clear about that, he's just stepping down in that, in that fire chief role, um, and I would anticipate him probably sticking around senior leadership role, be my assumption. So I need a motion on six, please.
Hello?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Sarchet?
The motion carries. Item seven, consider motion to solicit request for proposal to obtain a consultant to provide financial planning to assist Polk City with the long-term planings and goals. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, in front of the council, and as part of the pack, it should be an RFP, uh, does not have a date, but a month and year, what this is, is to identify and aid in Polk City's future financial health, and would be, uh, set up in such a way that, uh, goals of the council, as well as, uh, use of special revenues, current revenue streams and that type of thing would be analyzed. The written report would be back by October thirty-first of twenty eighteen, which gives us plenty of time to start enacting, uh, whatever, um, conclusions come out of this report. I am looking to, uh, receive proposals by May fourth, and council action May twenty-ninth after interview. There are three such firms that we've been able to identify, they are PFM Financial Advisors, Springstead Incorporated, and JES Iowa Consulting.
Questions for Gary, I know this is one of the things that was identified as a need during the budgeting process, Gary?
Exactly what can they do that current staff can't do? I mean, we have some very capable people for us right now, is there something more they can do that?
Yeah, so...
I'm sure they're not smarter than Lindsey.
We know that, uh, so I push for this, Ron, and, and in some conversations with council members elsewhere, this is something that other towns have done, and, and talking to them, I, I think it's, uh, a good time for us to, to spend the money here, it is, it is a spend, um, I, I wanna be careful on how we do it, and I also wanna, I'm glad you asked the question that way, because it isn't in any way, uh, something that Gary and Lindsey aren't doing, but in the role that they are, that, all the hats that they're being asked to, to play in the budgeting process, to go between with department heads, uh, the translator, the, the, just, all those things, I, I think, yeah, um, having someone from the outside come in and say, "Your process is here, or maybe a little deficient, or could be tweaked," or whatever, uh, is money well spent, and the main reason for now as opposed to a different time is, is what we went through with both, and the local sales, that was relatively unique, but I, I wanna take that lesson and not put ourselves in a similar spot again. My hope would be, uh, that this firm, and, and I wanna have some specific thoughts on the selection process as well, but the, our firm would be able to help us with that. Uh, I don't know, uh, for sure that that's the case, again, my indications are based on the other communities doing this, uh, and we're in that sort of middle phase on, you know, not big enough to do certain things, but, you know, big enough to have some bigger community problems that are, or issues to address, uh, could serve us well, so that's, that's kinda my spin, yes.
Well, I guess my biggest fear is, is, is that their findings, and I, and I hope I'm completely wrong, their findings are gonna be that we have to take in more revenue, they're not gonna show us how we can cut our spend, that's my biggest fear.
Would it be fair that these folks may also, because of, you know, we get in our, our box here, because we are concerned of overdoing here, but to bring in additional grant opportunities or things that we're doing, that there are other options, is that something, Rob, Gary, or, I, I mean, is it other sources of funding that we don't currently know about, is it using our funds, even though, I know we use them quite wisely and do a lot of different things with them, but is it using those more efficiently as well?
I, I don't know, and that's why I wanna, I wanna, I would, some council involvement in the interviewing process is key to me, and, and by that, I mean, uh, asking some of those similar questions, to me, the big ad is sort of assessing our processes, reviewing how we do things rather than looking at particular areas of their revenue or expenses, uh, but if that's a piece of it, if, if, if one of these firms or, or, it, it doesn't exist out there, then, then to me, we don't pursue any of them, and so that's why I wanna be very careful with the selection process, 'cause I, I don't know exactly what would all entail, what these, better know anything about, any of these firms can offer, but I wanna make sure that at least what I have in my head, and the, 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 the spend, um, for hiring consultants, does pay those dividends we can, I hope that it will, I don't know that, that's why I wanna be somewhat involved in, not just me, but, uh, some sort of, uh, collaborative process on bringing...
Well, man, forgive me if I didn't, if I couldn't find it or didn't see it, but how much money are we spending?
To put the RFP, determine, you know...
So they'll come back with a bid, essentially?
A lot to prove it.
Their capabilities, their value propositions, we can say A or N based on what they, if it's things that we don't need to look at, then...
We ask for an RFP and RFQ.
It's an RFP that will have qualifications as part of the RFP. And we have also asked for price, yes.
Yeah, is that the right way to go? If you're kinda...
Well, do you wanna go qualification-based or do you wanna go B-based? You wanna go qualification-based, you ask for a request for qualification, wanna go by bid, you'll take a low bid, maybe not the best guy, so you would take, you would look at your three proposals collectively, qualification statements, and say, "I like this guy now," kind of one, consultant one, by B.
That's a good point, so is, is there a way to say, maybe this is a question, I don't know, if we get, we get three bids, one does fifteen things, one does a hundred things, and one does two things, are we required to take the low bid?
Absolutely not, this is the service that you are going out for, request for proposal slash qualifications aren't, it's not required that you even go out, it's not required by law that you even go out for a request for proposal or qualification, so it is entirely up to you, it's driven by you, you receive the proposal slash qualification, decide you don't wanna proceed, or you wanna negotiate with a particular company...
Or select partial...
Or, yeah, you have every right to do so.
So wouldn't it RFI take your...
Request for information? Do you wanna go B-based, qualification-based?
You can do, you can do an RFQ with a sealed bid, it's, I, I think all these op, options are available, but ultimately, what happens is when you go with RFQ-based, tend to sway toward maybe the lower bid, which may not be what we want, I would, I would recommend a request for qualification, and let's, let's...
Back in fees, or the B?
What we can do, or we can ask to do a request for qualifications, and a sealed bid, and move that round, there's op, there's options, because it's not a requirement.
Mess anything up on the way that wording is on them.
Right, I mean, this isn't like a street project, we're required to, to do that in a certain way, this, we're not even required to do this way, and so I, if, if I'm understanding what Jeff's saying, very well may not, uh, that gives us a little...
But at the end of the day, we don't, at the end of the day, all we're approving here is to go out for proposal or qualifications, we're not spending any money and, or not committing anything until we deliver it back and commit the spending, if that's what we decide to do.
You do an RFQ, you're gonna have one step.
Okay.
Which I, I think is, I don't think it's important.
So you could approve it with direction to staff to revise what's supposed to be sent out to, let's just qualifications at this point, or however you wanna, we're gonna, Gary, put a draft in here, but obviously that's, it could be changed.
What we do is, uh, reword, um, item eight and item nine, qualifications that we're looking for in the selection process, and, uh, I'll read it again, but, um, just a little reword in there can accomplish what, uh, was just stated by Councilwoman Paulson.
How do we land on those three, Gary?
Excuse me?
How do we land on those three?
Those three have been, uh, utilized in the metro here and there, uh, were the only ones that I could find, uh, at the website, as well as Strut Lake Publications, uh, that buy this type of information.
The three that you see.
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, comment, I mean, this is, we're just considering the requests now, and that's very fair, but if, I'd like to be sure that once they come in, if we don't like them or if they're too high, we're gonna send them away.
They'll, they'll be...
Cause I, you know, we have, we have the right to vote no then.
Absolutely.
Cause it'll be a contract and...
Okay.
It would be very simple, you, you pick the best one that you like, or with other, other consulting services, try to put, find the one that fits best for the needs, not, well, this guy was twenty thousand dollars cheaper, and so let's go.
Yep, right, yep, good. The financial account plan, if you will.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, item nine, I'm sorry, eight, uh, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand eighteen forty-seven establishing the official publication of Polk City, now there's been a lot of internal staff work done on this, so...
Really?
Okay?
Yeah, I mean...
Yep.
With, um, publications, there's been recurring problems where the Des Moines Register, and problem isn't getting the publication in paper, problem is getting the actual, uh, proof of publications that have got original signature on it. First ran into this problem in December-January period with a budget amendment that was rejected by Polk County, and someplace between thirty and forty-five days later, we finally got a signed proof of publication with the tear sheets. This is becoming more problematic, um, it's constantly, we have to track down, did we get the publication, did we not, especially for the auditors they're in, uh, we find numerous misses as we go through the year, and as you know, we have a propensity to have public hearings as, as well as other official publications that are being made. Iro Code Section six eighteen speaks to what can be an official publication for a community, it's a newspaper, general circulation, have a list of subscriber who have paid or promised to pay for the newspaper at the nominal rate, devotes at least twenty-five percent of its total column space to more than one half, in more than one half of its issues, to information of a public character other than advertising, and is paid for at least by fifty percent by persons or subscribers to who it's distributed. We looked at, um, Tri-County Times, and due to their paper coming out on Thursdays and the meeting that the council has on Mondays, it is impossible to get that magical ten-day between them, we can get eleven, but we can't get ten, seven, that is required for zoning and, uh, various other issues that deal with having that paper come out on Thursday. We looked at the business record, Polk County and Des Moines both utilized the business record, and I have the last two weeks' copies here, and they are published on Friday, and, um, they will get our notices and affidavits back to us in a timely manner that has been promised. I'm asking council tonight by resolution number two thousand eighteen forty-seven to approve the business record as an official publication for the city, doesn't mean we always have to use them, we can still keep the Des Moines Register at times, but the business record is going to be cheaper, more timely, and we can get approved publications. Now, I understand that the business record, while having a circulation in Polk City, is not probably as readily available as a Des Moines Register, so to that end, um, a city webpage has been created that will allow any user to see any pending hearing, from the date that it is ordered by council to the day of the public hearing, will stand posted with additional information, more information that you're gonna, than you will get by just a publication, um, if you've been on the website in the last week, we have already started this.
And then the web, and the website isn't an official publication, so that's why we have to go through this stuff.
This to me is a completely outdated, uh, section of the code that...
Yeah, it's just a, the newspaper lobby is a strong one.
I get it, I get it, it is, it is, and a handful of others, so there's a cheaper option, uh, you know...
Well, what, what if we get them buried in like the sports section or something? I mean, it makes no sense where they're put, I mean, legitimately, it's in this...
Legitimately, the last budget that we had, I had to ask people that received the Des Moines Register to save the copy so I could get the tear sheets to go with the affidavits so she could file the budget, because I couldn't rely on them to do what I needed them to do.
Be so hard.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Starchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Question carries.
Before, I just like, I talk to more and more people that are dropping the register, so I don't think this is going to be a big loss. Changing, I don't know, I'm sure there are going to be people unhappy about it, but once they find out how it can be used, I think it'd be an advantage, you know, now if you can find up, if you can come up with one that, put on our website that you can get box scores Friday morning on Thursday night's game, instead of Wednesday night's game, I'll, I'll be behind even more.
I can put a couple of blocks.
Put a link over to the Cubs' website.
I will say, though, I'm glad that we took an opportunity with a challenge to create a better solution for all and get their finance websites. Really, I think that's where people would go, I mean, it gets, this one is buried, and so whoever, you know, was behind all the pieces to this, I really appreciate city staff taking, like I said, a challenge and turning it in, it's been very positive, I think.
Great, appreciate it. Yep.
Item nine, consider motion to approve resolution 201848 approving March 2018 invoices for Snyder and Associates in the amount of $13,765.
So moved. Roll call?
DeVore?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Starchat?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Walters?
Same. Question carries. Item seven, Mayor's National Police Week proclamation for May 13th through the 19th. As has been the case for the last several meetings, I feel like there's another proclamation, so I'll read the last paragraph here. Now, therefore, I, Jason Morse, Mayor of Polk City, Iowa, do hereby recognize the week of May 13th, 19th, 2018. It's a National Police Week in Polk City, Iowa, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. I urge all citizens to recognize these efforts, are these officers faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities. Thank you, Chief.
Hold copy.
Sign this right now. Thanks. Item eight, reports, I'll lead off real quick and we'll hopefully get on out of here. Just a quick report over these last couple of weeks regarding, and I think that the communications thing is a key, key thing, considering I had a couple of people with some interesting comments here in the last couple of weeks, but I'd like to say that I think that as a whole, we probably go above and beyond most of the other communities around here as far as what we're trying to do with the communication piece of it, with this piece, with all of the stuff that we're putting on our website. I mean, I know four years ago, all we would do would put the agenda, now we're putting a complete packet, we started doing audio recording, video recording, you know, Facebook, Twitter, going through Polk City Square and everything. I, I said to somebody recently, you know, without having a small-town paper, it's hard, and I was informed that nobody's read the paper since 1979, so I argued the point, but it was comments. So, anyway, it, I, I-
Stop back up. Somebody said we haven't had the paper since-
Somebody said that nobody's read the paper since 1979. That's what I, anyway, I'd like to say that I think that we're going above and beyond to do the communication, and I do appreciate all the parties involved making that happen. So, along those lines of the communication piece to this, I do want to say that, you know, regarding a couple of issues here recently, and staff worked really hard over, on Friday, we had a potential issue that was handled, and they did a really nice job of, of making the parties work together to hopefully come up with a viable solution that will come before us here in the next few weeks. And I think that, based on the comments that I heard back from a couple of people, I think that that was a, a good move, so. And along those lines, Mike, I know you guys are working to get that North Polk sign replaced. It's not being destroyed contrary to popular belief, and it's actually going out there along the mile on Bridge Road, next to our other signs that, quite honestly, will have better visibility than where it was on the north side of town. So, do appreciate you guys doing that. I know the weather has been all rough for the last month, and I think, you know, after this next week, get through some water main flushing, be good to go, so. Do appreciate the other people who've been willing to have reasonable conversations with me, and I'll leave it at that.
Did you put the plow away?
Doug, you're not, you're not supposed to go down that road, Ron.
Along those same lines, I've had a lot of questions post to me about what signs are allowed, what signs are allowed, where is it only in the public right-of-way, is it on public property?
I would encourage them to go to our ordinance that is pretty thick, as far as Chapter 166.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking, because I didn't want to read.
And Chapter 166, I happen to have a copy of it here, right, you know, right there, so I would ask them to go there, and if they've got additional questions or comments, I encourage them to get a hold down here, because I think that there's some, let's just say, I think that there's been some things that we haven't necessarily been, you know, totally enforcing along the way. No offense against anybody whatsoever, but I think it's opened up some questions.
Yeah, definitely, and, you know, because people are seeing some, how come mine come down and somebody else's?
So, the only signs, just to be clear, that came down were the temporary signs that were put up from a policy from 2009 that was our policy, those are the only signs that have come down this far, so far, staff has not been directed to go out and remove any other signs. So, if there are temporary signs that have been removed, it's not been by our staff.
Okay.
Questions, comments? Anybody else, staff, anything else to add?
I have one. Mayor, and I'm not asking for council to make a decision tonight, I would like to have a nod if you want to move forward. As you will recall, council passed in August of 2017 a resolution that related to our water department, specifically water capacity. At that time in that resolution, amongst other things that going out of bidding, we also exercised a right that sometime in the future, with the next possible bond that would come forth, should it be water, that we have a right to recover the money from general that was spent in water capacity. With conversations today with bonding, people, Spirit Financial, Lindsay, if there is enough interest from council tonight, we will start the paperwork, that is a half million dollars that would go back to the general fund. It's very important, and you've heard me talk many times, especially budgeting, about the importance of the general fund. With the votes that have taken place in March, it's going to be hard to actually gain in the general fund. So, we have an opportunity, an opportunity that's approaching us, that we can put this half million dollars into the bond. We will start with the paperwork tomorrow, and the absolute decision will be in the near future by council. I just don't want to spend the extra money, put that in, if in fact, council does not want to recover those funds.
I would, not to beat you thick-headed, but I would, after, just be refreshed, that's just more debt, we're, we're financing basically, right? We're financing, we have financed that, and we are looking to refinance that to get that money back.
It would be, I mean, we're in a, we're in a process of setting that for the water expansion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
But yes, it would add $500,000 more to the bond.
Right.
To replenish the general-
Because otherwise, we would, we'd continue to carry that.
This is nothing more than a head nod at this point.
So, what, if I'm understanding this, and I'm probably not, the $500,000 is going to come from the increase in taxes that we've already voted on, and it will be that much longer, or the $500,000 come from the bond proceeds, and the payback of those bond proceeds would go on property tax? You would be adding for-
Be adding debt, but it's mostly an accounting change from general onto the, the-
That makes sense, okay. And should there be enough in water, you can offset those bonds by water. GO means that the general obligation, they're not restricted to revenue bonds. Revenue bonds means they have to actually come from that source that they're enhancing.
Questions on that? I mean, it's basically, he's just going to-
Makes sense to, I'm trying to kick the tires on at least.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
I want to thank Dan Govins for his many years of service, putting in all the time he has to all the fire department, many, many, many hours, and, and also Deer Haven, Grimes intersection, you guys are working on it, right? I saw it in the notes.
Yep.
Okay. That's only if you're going that fast, dude.
No, it doesn't matter.
I know, you kind of did that.
It's a, well, there's a double.
I know.
That's good.
Anyway, I asked, like, I'm sorry, I can't remember what you said, when are we targeting having something on that?
I, I kind of had a draft memo, I was anxious tonight, but I want to go over with Gary before we-
No, and, but, four eyes is good.
Need a motion?
Before we go, I'd like to say one thing, I'd like to thank the police department and the fire department, they came and got my mother-in-law a week ago Monday, she had a stroke, and Diana said, we're going to have to take her to the hospital. I said, no, we're not. I don't know how we got her in a car. We called and called, I called dispatch and asked, and started asking a bunch of questions, and I didn't know the answers to, and I get the phone from my wife, and while she was talking to him, there was already a knock on the door. That's how they, so, thank you to everyone. Matt, who was an officer.
Top-notch.
Totally agree. Thanks to the fire department for delivering pizzas again this week. Fun watching them run around. Yeah, Mike had a good job. Ron?
Motion to adjourn.
Take it.
All in favor?